Good evening. I'd like to call the May 10, 2022, meeting of the Dare County Board of Education to order. We're meeting at Kitty Hawk Elementary School and the time is 5:02. Before we begin, I'd like to request a moment of silence. Next, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Margaret Lawler, who will be providing the welcome and the lead of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening, and thank you, Dr. Lawrence and Dr. Colvin, for hosting us today on such short notice. We were going to be here in June, but we obviously are not going to go down to Hatteras today. So I'm going to give the speech I would have given in June. It's bittersweet. We have three wonderful principals retiring: Jody Mitchum, Thomas McGahey, and Greg Florence. They all represent 84 years of dedicated education to the children. And I'd especially like to thank Greg Florence, who I've known for 15 years since he's been here. I don't know what Kitty Hawk's going to do without you, and I hope you'll come back for the carnival and get in the dunking booth and ride the shark. They're going to miss you, Greg. And while we're talking about Kitty Hawk, I want to compliment or congratulate the Odyssey the Mine team. They won for the state, and they are now going to Ames, Iowa. For anybody not familiar with Odyssey the Mine, it starts in October. The kids have a choice of about six or five different challenges to do. They meet twice a week, so it is a very long process. So congratulations to the kids and to the parents who have gotten them to all their meetings and all their practices. I also want to have a say, a compliment to Sandy Kinzel and Keith Parker. Sandy's going to retire, and Keith is going to go to Elizabeth City. And just tell you how much I have enjoyed working with you. You've been part of the best central office team I've ever been with. Anytime we had any questions, you dropped everything and answered everything, and you have, we have giant shoes to fill. So thank you so much. And lastly, but not least, I would like to thank all the teachers, principals, cafeteria, custodians, and bus drivers for a fabulous year. We've been in and out of school for two years, and we're almost at the end, and you all did it. And thank you so much for all that you've done all year. With that said, please join me in doing the pledge.
Our first order of business this evening is the approval of the agenda. But before we continue, I'd like to request a motion to amend the agenda to revise the personnel consent agenda under item 8A. Do I hear a motion to agenda, amend the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move, we amend the agenda to revise the personnel consent agenda under item A, 8A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Lawler, the second by Ms. Bothwell. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on the floor to approve the amend agenda to revise the personnel 8A?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the amended agenda.
We have a motion on the floor by Frank.
I have a second.
Second by Woody. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would pass. Oh, let's see here. Next, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Parker.
We are going to have Dr. Mitchum and Ms. Weeks share with us some recognitions tonight. And I do want to thank Principal Mitchum and Ms. Weeks for preparing these recognitions when we realized we were going to have to change the location of the Board of Education meeting. Excuse me. They were very willing to jump in and provide some recognitions for the staff and students at First Flight Elementary School. And we are going to reschedule the Cape Hatteras Elementary School recognitions when we reschedule that board meeting. So to the students that were planning to be recognized at Cape Hatteras Elementary, we're very proud of you, and we're going to make sure you get those recognitions when we reschedule. And so to Dr. Mitchum, thank you for jumping in and being very flexible in helping us tonight. So we're very excited to hear from our First Flight families and community about these recognitions. I'm glad Dr. Mitchum could come forward. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. And good evening, Chairman Twitty, Vice Chairman Bothwell, Dr. Farley, distinguished board members, and all those in attendance tonight. It is my pleasure to recognize this evening some of our First Flight Elementary staff and students who have contributed to the success of our school through their accomplishments and endeavors. We invite you to join us in honoring them. Our first staff member who we would like to recognize is Ms. Crystal Gores for being our Teacher of the Year for 2021-2022. Ms. Gores is a National Board certified teacher, and she has taught in Dare County schools for 12 years, the last five of which have been at First Flight Elementary School. Ms. Gores is a classroom and school leader who creates a respectful and caring learning environment for her students. She innately understands her students and supports them academically, socially, and emotionally. She serves as our School Improvement Chair this year, School Improvement Team Chair, and has introduced and implemented initiatives to help maintain a strong school culture at First Flight Elementary. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Crystal Gores. Our next staff member who we want to recognize this evening was at the last minute unable to be with us, but I would still like to just recognize her. This is our Classified Employee of the Year for 2021-22, Ms. Abby Long. Mrs. Long has been a teacher assistant at First Flight Elementary for 15 years. She has served in pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, and then she decided to stretch her wings a bit and go into our Exceptional Children's Department. Ms. Long is really, we recognize her as a child whisperer. No matter what the child's needs may be, she finds just the right way to connect with them and help them grow as a learner and as a person. She's always professional, always has a smile on her face, and a positive attitude and solution for any situation. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Abby Long. We also have with us tonight three of our teachers who are National Board certified and this past year successfully completed National Board Maintenance of Certification. National Board for Professional Teaching Standards has at its core the goal of maintaining high and rigorous standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. Once earned by a teacher, the certification must be revisited every five years through a rigorous process of showcasing how the teacher has continued to grow in their professional practice and how they have positively impacted student learning. This year, the three teachers who successfully completed National Board Maintenance of Certification Ladies, we are proud of you for your accomplishments and your continued leadership at First Flight So now we'll move to some student recognitions. Our first recognition is having to do with the P. Island Preservation Society essay. The P. Island Preservation Society essay contest is an annual opportunity for Dare County fourth graders to express their ideas in 200 words or less of what character traits made keeper Richard Etheridge and his crew successful at their jobs and why those character traits are important today. We were proud to have one of our own First Flight Elementary students whose work was recognized by the society as an outstanding piece. Kane Keating, please come forward to receive your certificate of recognition. And for our final recognition for this evening, we want to recognize our First Flight Elementary School Elementary Battle of the Books team. Elementary Battle of the Books is an annual competition among teams of fourth and fifth graders. Students read 15 books and then compete against one another in a quiz bowl-type competition. Each year, elementary schools in Dare County compete with each other. The winner of this competition moves on to the regional competition, where they compete against teams from nine North Carolina counties. We are proud to recognize our First Flight Elementary School Battle of the Books team because not only did they take first place in the district competition, but they went on to compete in the regional competition, which is the highest level for the elementary bracket, and placed fifth the very first time they ever went. We were very, very proud of them and their coaches for their hard work, dedication to reading, and their team spirit. So team, as I call your names, come forward to be recognized. And our last team member, who I don't think is here with us tonight, is Finley Parker. And we also want to recognize their coaches, Ms. Stacy Hampf and Ms. Corinne West. Congratulations, team and coaches. We are super, super proud of you all.
Chairman Twitty, that concludes the recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Wonderful job, First Flight Elementary. Really was. We will turn now turn the, turn the meeting over for public comments to our board attorney, Richard Short.
We will now move to public comment. I'll read the following statement before we begin. The Dare County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. This portion of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest or concern from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue for questions and answers or for impromptu board responses. The board may determine whether to provide information or responses to public comments if it is necessary or appropriate at a later time. Concerns regarding school personnel are usually most effectively addressed with the administration at the school or central office levels or through other existing board policies, and those alternatives are encouraged by the board. The board appreciates courteous and respectful presentations, obscene, vulgar, indecent, abusive, threatening, or profane statements, or statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or imminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. The board would like to remind speakers that their public comments could violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy. If speakers are unsure of the legal effects of their remarks, they should seek independent advice. Each person or organization will be granted three minutes. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. We will be using an electronic timing system that will provide the speaker with a green light when time starts. The light will move to yellow when the speaker has one minute left, and the red light indicates the time is up, and the speaker will be asked to leave the podium to allow for the next speaker to address the board. If a speaker wishes to submit documents to the board as part of their public comment and did not submit the documents to the person collecting the public comment, sign up forms before the meeting, they may leave the documents at the podium when they come forward to address the board. In no time during public comment or any other time during the board meeting shall the speaker or anyone else attending the meeting approach the board table for any reason unless invited to do so by the board chair. Any person who fails to comply with these guidelines or causes substantial or continued disruption to the orderly conduct of the Board of Education's business will be removed. Failure to vacate the meeting after being directed is a criminal offense and violation of North Carolina General Statutes 14288.4 and 143-318.17. The first person signed up for public comment this evening is David Bragg. Speakers are asked to begin by stating their full name for the record. Would you please come forward to the podium, Mr. Bragg?
David Bragg, Nagseth. First of all, kudos to Ms. Tilly and her staff for the preparation and presentation of next year's budget. It was very informative. Unfortunately, Mr. Twitty, I believe that any public, open to the public meetings of the school board require public comment, and we were not allowed public comment during the Budget Committee meeting, Budget Board meeting. And I believe the Board of Commissioners is having their meeting this coming week, and they made sure they had announced there would be public comment. I spoke to a lawyer. He told me that that's in violation, so we'll be looking at recourse on that because I'd like to ask questions about the budget. Speaking of the budget, I'd also like to speak on the violation of the Alstead Act. Renting properties in the Manio area and possibly other areas that are not present in the current budget, I listened closely at the budget meeting, and there was no mention of this revenue. I also have requested access to this information since early April and have not received any information as of today. I have volunteered to work, come and work with the finance people. I used to be a finance person. What I request that you take very little time. If it's in the finance system, it's a simple query. That's my question. Is it in the finance system? Or is it being tracked by the realtors that you're using to collect the checks from the tenants in the trailers? And if so, where is this money going? It's a lot of money, and it doesn't appear in the budget. Let's see here. What else do I have? Avid. Spoke about Avid last time, or it was spoken about last time. Mr. Farley, you told me in one of your emails that you no longer believe in globalism. Well, they spoke of globalism, having our children in Chinese schools. Kind of sounds like they want to teach communism. I don't understand how I could be told all these things, and then I read things about Avid. Avid said that it's not only for college preparation, it's for everything. Basically, in the glossary of the budget, it defines exactly what Avid is, and it's preparation for college. Looking at the budget, there's a whole lot of money in many programs that I have questions about. We're spending $2.6 million to teach English to kids, and we're spending 2.2 of that million to teach kids Spanish. So I don't know where all this money's going for. You got a $436,000 contract in there. You've got exchange teachers that we're bringing in from I don't know where because I can't
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Next is Liv Cook. And Ms. Cook left some materials at the podium that'll be passed around the table here.
Much like Dare County Schools did not provide curriculums and unit resources for its teachers, Dare County also doesn't provide an exit interview for its teachers when employment is terminated. So much like a Dare County school teacher, I spent my own time to visit the websites of other school districts to piece together my own version of an exit interview. In front of you, you should have a copy of the cumulative data from my independent research. I sent out a seven-question survey to former Dare County Schools employees. I was able to get 16 anonymous responses, while my goal was to get at least 20 responses, which I started this project on Saturday. I wanted to have a decent sample size, but while I only got 16 responses so far, 17 actually now, that's at least 16 more than Dare County Schools has set out to get itself. Let's get straight to the point. The Board of Education has spent time discussing the need for affordable housing and has brought in to play the notion that COVID has caused many teachers to leave the profession. If you look at the second page of the handout, you'll see the two bar graphs. One question asks what most influenced your decision to leave Dare County Schools. 44% said inadequate compensation, 18% said inadequate support from building administration, and a whopping 50% said inadequate support from central office administration. Zero responses indicated their decision to leave had anything to do with COVID, inadequate affordable housing, inadequate colleague support, relocation, or a new professional opportunity. When you skip down to the next bar graph, the same options were listed to choose from as the second-largest influence on the decision to leave Dare County Schools. For those that did not indicate it as their first reason, inadequate support from central office was the second-largest reason for them to terminate their employment at 46.7%. So, Mrs. Lawler, while this is the best team you may have ever worked with, our data from our former Dare County School teachers says the exact opposite. Board of Education members, community members, Dr. Farley, I am bringing you data from your own website last time and from your own former employees now. You cannot deny that we are losing our educators. In fact, Dare County School educators are proving quickly to be Dare County's greatest export, right up there with sport fishing yachts and soft-shell crabs. To quote one participant from my unofficial exit interview, but it summarized the great group, "I loved teaching and always thought it would be my career until I reached retirement. The culture within the school system decayed so quickly under Dr. Farley's leadership that it became a matter of how I could get out and still support my family. I watched as friends of mine were fired or forced into retirement, not so affectionately known as being Farleyed. Another friend left the county altogether after Dr. Farley angrily screamed profanities at him in a closed-door meeting. It is my understanding that this is how many of his meetings go with administration figures. This created a culture of fear..."
Thank you, Ms. Cook. I appreciate it.
"...that was pushed down and affected everyone in our building."
Ms. Cook, thank you.
That concludes the public comments.
Next, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Farley for announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, thoughts go out to all our community members and Hatteras with the storms. Couple of homes actually fell into the ocean this afternoon, so our thoughts and prayers are out there with the entire community. The road is going to be closed tomorrow, so we will be virtual again at the two Hatteras schools. Fortunately, the teachers and the administrators did a great job getting the kids prepared just in case. We hope we can get back into school on Thursday. Next, I'd like to second Ms. Lawler's comments and ask Greg and Jody to stand. These are two of the best principals that we've had in Dare County schools. They're professional, they're loyal team players, they're great leaders. I've enjoyed working with both of you for the last five years, very proud of you, and wish you all the best in retirement. Next, we'll be getting notice out to our Teachers of the Year from 2021-22. We always celebrate a year in advance, or behind, actually. For the first time since COVID, we're going to be able to have our banquet to recognize the Teachers of the Year and the Classified Employees of the Year, and we'll get those, get that information out. Right now, we're looking at June 1st at 5:30, and I want to thank Ms. Kinzel for putting that together, and we're looking forward to getting all those folks together and recognizing our great staff. Lastly, just a couple of reminders. The board has been invited to the, a couple upcoming events. Virginia Stellit Community Center Dedication Ceremony is this Thursday at 4 o'clock. Looking forward to that. And then towards the latter end of the month, the Dare County Health and Human Services Department has a ribbon cutting and open house on the 24th at 4:00. So looking forward to those two events. It's all ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Farley. We'll move the meeting to the next item on the agenda, which is approve the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the revised personnel consent agenda, minutes of the April 12, 2022, special and regular session meetings, budget amendments, and the government and education access channel budget. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion on the floor by Margaret. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Frank. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it passes unanimously. Now I will turn the meeting back over to Dr. Farley for reports and items for information.
Sure. So last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and we're very grateful for our 450 teachers here in Dare County Schools. We think, we know that we have the best teaching array of teachers in the state. Ms. Mitchum, or Dr. Mitchum earlier was talking about the National Board certified teachers recognizing those from First Flight Elementary School earlier. In 2020, I believe it was, we were ranked fourth in the entire nation in the percentage of National Board teachers. So that speaks volumes of the commitment of our teachers. And also, Dr. Mitchum and Diane Childress have led up the training for our teachers for several years, and got another one coming up next week, this week. But we are very fortunate. We want to thank all the PTOs and the PTAs across the district who put together several different events, lunches for our teachers, lots of gift bags, lots of presents. And on behalf of the district, every employee got a tote bag. And then we want to thank the board through the month of May. We're going to go out to each school and put out a lunch, and we'll get that schedule out to the Board of Education members here shortly. So big shout out to our teachers.
Thank you, John. Yes, big shout out to the teachers. Next item on the agenda is approval of the Dare County Schools' proposed budget for 2022-2023. Dr. Farley and Ms. Tilly?
Good evening, Chairman Twitty, Vice Chair Bothwell, board members, Dr. Farley. Before you tonight is a revised budget of what was presented last Wednesday. There was revenue left out that the attorney has advised us needs to be put in based on the current status of property that we own. The budget that you have before you tonight increases by $95,000. This was not included in the original budget because at the time that this budget was prepared, the uncertainty of that property was not known for fiscal year '22-23. It was... It was, we weren't sure that that property was going to be at the point of earning any revenue, so it was not included. And in my professional opinion, I do believe that was fiscally responsible on my part.
So before you continue, Kenny. So as the board knows, the board has had a CIP committee that's met over the last couple of months with representatives from the Coastal Affordable Housing Company that has partnered with the county to build affordable housing in Dare County. So the CIP committee has met three times now in the last couple of months with members of that committee, and at the time that the budget was built, the board had not yet determined if it was going to transfer the property or keep the property that brings in the estimated $95,000 income. As of today, the board has not decided to do anything with the transfer. The CIP committee has not landed yet on a decision. So again, Mr. Schwartz has advised us to include that until, or if, the board makes a decision to transfer the property.
Mr. Bragg, please. Thank you.
Corresponding increases for this revenue are $45,000 to EC Contracted Services and $50,000 to the fuel line for transportation. I do want to note that this revenue has been included in prior-year budgets. It was not included this year for the reasons stated. This revised budget also includes a detailed sheet for our academically and intellectually gifted program. While the amount of the budget, and it's on page 22 in your revised budget, while the amount was in the total, it was, the detailed sheet was simply omitted. That was a human error, and I apologize for that. And finally, as we mentioned at the meeting when we were looking at student fees, I didn't notice out-of-district tuition on there. That has been added to the student fees in your new book tonight. Other than that, what was presented at last Wednesday's meeting is the proposed budget. So tonight, this is before you, and we do have to turn a budget into the county by May 15th per general statute.
Do we have any other questions for Ms. Tilly? Ms. Tilly, I wanted to let you know that that's what we have workshops for, is so we can review the data, the paperwork, and make changes prior to the board meeting in May. So thank you so much for getting us started in the workshop, revisiting what the documents you went through with your staff, and thanks, Rich, for giving us an update. But that's what the workshops are for, is to see what we're working with, and then come back and give clarification to our board so we can accept that.
Thank you.
If we have no other questions for Ms. Tilly, I'd like to have a motion to adopt the Dare County Schools' proposed budget for 2022-2023.
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt the Dare County School proposed budget for 2022-23 as presented.
We have a motion on the floor by Margaret.
Second.
Second by Susan. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. So passed unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now we're moving to new business, and I'll turn the meeting over to Ms. Kinzel for presenting the monthly face covering policy.
Good evening, Chairman Twitty, Adam, Vice Chair, and members of the board, and Dr. Farley. It's my pleasure to present for the last time the policy 4231-5021-7263 face coverings for a mandatory review and potential modification for the remainder of the school year. Tonight's review will take us through the end of the school year, and therefore, we will not need to do this again. The policy as presented is being recommended that you make no modifications to, and I will leave you vote on that.
Thank you, Ms. Kinzel. As required by Session Law 2021-130, we need to vote on whether or not Policy 4231/5021/7263 face covering should be modified.
Mr. Chair, I move that we make no modification to Policy 4231/5021/7263.
We have a motion on the floor by Frank. Second by Woody. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Next on the item is agenda is proposed contract for Manio Elementary School chiller replacement, and I'll turn the meeting over to Ms. Tilly again.
Good evening again. Last Friday, May 6, Director of Maintenance Scott Austin and our HVAC specialist Rob Perry and I held a public bid opening. There were three vendors present and three bids submitted. The lowest responsive responsible bidder was Colonial Web Contractors Company of Chesapeake, Virginia, and the bid amount was for $14,016, $14,016,475 to replace a chiller at Manio
Do I have a motion on the floor to approve the bid submitted by Colonial Web Contractors Company for the amount of $416,475 for the chiller replacement for Manio Elementary School, and authorize the staff to finalize contract documents and issue the notice of proceed to the contractor as soon as possible? Still moved? Motion on the floor by Woody. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Susan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Next, we're going to hear from Dr. Farley in regards of recommendation and naming the Kitty Hawk Elementary School baseball field.
Yes, so it's my honor tonight to present to the board a recommendation from our Facility Naming Committee to name the backfield here at Kitty Hawk Elementary School in honor of Bill Walker. For those of you that did not know the late Bill Walker, he was in law enforcement, he was the president of OBX Baseball for over 10 years, involved in the program for almost 20 years. During his tenure, he brought several Bayou baseball tournaments to the Outer Banks, including the Bayou World Series in '96 and '98. He also served as the Assistant State Director of North Carolina Bayou for four years. John Britt is here tonight. John, give us a wave. John is my boss on the baseball field. He's our commissioner and president of the OBX Baseball League, and I volunteer to coach my nine- and 10-year-old, well, no, I don't have all 12. My 10-year-old and 11 of his nine- and 10-year-old buddies, and I know how hard John works, and everyone who's in the organization and a commitment to doing right by kids, and it's an amazing experience on a daily basis to be out working with kids and the supportive families. And the recommendation came from the Board of Directors unanimously. There's several letters that also came to the Facility's Naming Committee, including Sheriff Doughty, and with overwhelming majority support, the Facility's Naming Committee has made a recommendation to the board tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Farley. With that saying, do I have a motion on the floor to approve the recommendation and name the Kitty Hawk Elementary School baseball field the Bill Walker Baseball Field?
Mr. Chairman, it is my honor, because I knew Bill Walker, I move that we approve the recommendation to name Kitty Hawk Elementary School baseball field the Bill Walker Baseball Field. I've spent so many hours there.
Yes, he has.
This is wonderful.
Do I have a second on the floor?
Second.
Go ahead.
Second by Woody. Any other discussions? Well deserved. He's done a lot of work for the community. So congratulation. All said, motion carries. Thank you all.
Mr. Chair, you need to call for a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the board comments. Woody, do you have any comments tonight?
Yeah, I got a quick question. Can we get an update, not now, but on the JR2C research that you're doing, just to see where we're at on that?
Sure.
Thanks.
Margaret?
I think this has to be the shortest meeting we've ever had. Forty-one minutes.
Bragg, do you have anything?
I just wanted to say again how much work Ms. Tilly went into during the workshop going over the program, I know, or the budget. I know it was a lot easier for me to understand this one than the very first one I saw, so it did take a lot of time and effort, and I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Susan?
Just my thoughts are going out to all the Heterus peeps. I hope everybody's safe down there and that we can come visit you sometime very soon, and we will miss those two principals big time over there.
Thank you all. I appreciate everyone doing the hard work as you do every day, from the board members right on down to the staff and the students. Couldn't ask for a better team. So with that being said...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment before we conclude. Thank you. So we've had a lot of criticism in the last 12 to 14 months, and as superintendent, you expect that, and criticism and healthy debate is part of the work. The criticism of my team has been unjust, unfair. It's weighed heavily on them for several months. It impacts their families. It impacts their children. And I can take, you want to say that I'm losing my hair, I've gained 20 pounds during COVID, you don't like decisions about face masks. I file policy, we're consistent, and when someone steps up and makes defamatory comments about me, that is damaging, and I will sit idle no more. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Farley. Do I have a motion on the floor to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor by Margaret. Second.
Second.
Second by Susan. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.